Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, March 26, 2014. And Mr. Paulson, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Seac, Commissioner Bandami, Commissioner Talisfor,
Here.
Vice Chair Birch,
Here.
Chair Smith.
Present.
And Commissioners Erickson and O'Donnell have excused absences.
I would like everyone to stand, and if I could have Commissioner Bandami have the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and Mr. Paulson, I believe you have an announcement to make.
I do have an announcement. So it came to staff's attention that the developer at 375 Knowles Drive has a pending project, and it was erroneously placed on the sign that that meeting was this evening. There will, that item will not be discussed this evening. That item is tentatively scheduled for April 23, and official notices will go out to all of the neighbors within 300 feet. If anyone has questions specifically about that, they can contact Suzanne Avila at the Community Development Department, and she can give you more guidance on that. But rather than have people potentially sit through the meeting, we thought we'd announce that as early as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. So we didn't want anyone who's present to sit through the meeting expecting the item to be called, so you're more than welcome.
You can say it if you want.
All right. Thank you. And so, as we move on, we talk about public participation, and as you know, the Town of Los Gatos strongly urges public participation in all of the processes of the town. And what we want to do is to assure you that you will have three opportunities to, you could have up to three opportunities to speak this evening. The first opportunity would be public comments on an item that is not on the agenda this evening. If you're interested in speaking to an item that is not on the agenda, then you should fill out a speaker's card that is in back of your seats there, you see them, yellow speaker cards. You can also submit written comments about agenda items to the staff prior to the meeting. They're always welcome, and they're very helpful at our meetings. You can also fill out a card and speak to any agenda item. Just so that you know, the process we follow is, we give you three minutes to speak, you step up to the podium, you introduce yourself, state your name and address, and when the light turns yellow, then you know you have 30 seconds left of your three minutes. I would like to ask the Commissioners if they have read the minutes from the meetings of February 26 and March 12, and are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? May I have a motion to adopt the minutes? Commissioner Seac?
I move to adopt the minutes from February 26 and March 12, as is written in our draft report.
Commissioner Birch?
I'll second that motion.
All right, the motion is carried unanimously, all in favor. I jumped ahead, thank you. So, are there any written communications this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to, are there any requested continuances, Mr. Paulson?
There are not any requested continuances, but backing up, there are written communications. There's a desk item for all three items on the agenda this evening, and those are at the dais, and there are also copies out in the lobby.
All right. Commissioners, have you had an opportunity to read the desk items, or would you like to take a few minutes now and go over them? Commissioner Talisfor?
I probably need about another minute, just to look at this.
All right, so let's just take a few minutes, and then Commissioner Talis first, you'll let us know when you're ready. Thank you. All right, we're all set, then. We've now come to the verbal communication portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the Commission on any issue that is not on tonight's agenda, and I have no cards, so I'm going to assume that all of you are here for items that are on the agenda. We'll move along to the consent calendar. There is one item on the consent calendar this evening. Item one is a request to approve Conditional Use Permit Application U-14003, requesting approval to conduct group fitness classes conducted by Core Evolution Studio at 15551 Union Avenue. Before the Commission acts on this matter, any person wishing to have a consent item discussed may request that the Planning Commission remove it from the consent calendar, and it will be heard under the new public hearing section of the agenda. Seeing none, do I have a motion from a Commissioner to approve this item? Commissioner Talisfor?
Right, I will move to approve the consent item, Conditional Use Permit Application U-14-003 at 15551 Union Avenue. I can see that there's, there's nothing that I would object to.
And the second?
I'll second the motion.
The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we move on to the new public hearings. I do not have any speaker cards that, before me, so I just want to tell you that if you intend to speak on item, on this agenda, item which is at 81 West Main Street, you must fill out a speaker card and submit it to the staff to my right. We'll now consider Agenda Item One, which is an application requesting approval to increase seating and provide full alcoholic beverage service for a restaurant on property located at 81 West Main Street, Conditional Use Permit U-14002. May I have a show of hands from the Commissioners who have visited the property under consideration? And are there any disclosures by any Commissioner? Having none, Ms. Savage, I understand you're going to give us the report this evening.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The applicant is proposing to increase the existing seating from 6 to 20. The applicant is also proposing to increase the alcoholic beverage service from none to full. The hours of operation are proposed from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., seven days a week. The use meets the parking requirements, it includes mitigation fees for traffic, as well as community benefit requirements, and would comply with the alcoholic beverage policy. You do have two desk items before you on this evening. For this item this evening, the first one is a public comment in support of the application. The second one includes a complete set of recommended conditions of approval. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Are there any questions of staff? Yes, Commissioner Birch?
I just wanted to confirm the number of seats they want to increase to. Is it 26? You said 20.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did say 20, it is 26.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks.
Any other comments? All right. I do not have an applicant card here, so Ms. Pizzo, you need to fill out a card, no, please step forward, but you need to fill out a card before you leave this evening and submit it to us. As the applicant, you will have five minutes to give us a presentation. Please step forward, talk directly into the microphone, and for the record, just state your name and your address.
Anna Pizzo, 893 Riverside Drive, San Jose, California, 95125.
Go ahead, begin.
My name is Anna Pizzo, owner, chef of Zona Rosa. I opened Zona Rosa in July of 2012 in the Rose Garden community in San Jose. It has been received well by the community and has been a profitable business. People tend to make assumptions about Mexican food, that it is cheerful, it's fast, it's free-flowing of chips and salsa. The concept of Zona Rosa is slightly different. We are a farm-to-table Mexican eatery that offers sustainable, seasonal, healthy style of eating. We specialize in seasonal dishes inspired by family recipes. All our food is made from scratch, some of the items we offer are organic blue corn, or hand-pressed blue corn and yellow corn tortillas. We do not mass produce, we take pride in serving everything fresh. With regards to alcohol, it is a small portion of the business. Zona Rosa currently offers four or five cocktails on the menu that are made seasonally. We offer some handcrafted sangrias, beer, and wine. We do not have any plans to create a bar seating, counter service of any type. We serve drinks typically with mil, with meals. We have no plans of having like a happy hour or any of that type of thing. Los Gatos is a great, it's a next move for myself, I love the town. I know it offers good community involvement, and its values, entertainment and recreational options for their community. The building that I will occupy sort of fits my business model, and that it has a great brick interior that could add to the rustic touches that we have over in the Rose Garden area. I understand that there are three other Mexican restaurants in Los Gatos, however, I feel that Zona Rosa offers a slightly different menu that could add variety and give the community more options, and Mexican. Thank you. Do you have questions?
Yes, please stay here so we can ask you some questions. Yes, Commissioner Talisfor?
Hi, thank you for presenting tonight. Anyway, I do have a question, and that is, can you tell us, limited cocktails, can you tell us what cocktails you're talking about, and do you, is it just like five cocktails, period, or do you change them from time to time?
We have, we currently have, right now, four or five cocktails on the menu. We have a classic margarita, we have a seasonal that changes depending on what fruits are in season, we have a baloma, we have mainly like four cocktails. We don't have a full bar, we don't serve a variety of drinks, we just offer, that is the menu we have, that is what we serve.
Okay. And then also, how does your sustainable food-to-table work? How do you incorporate that into your, into your menu?
Well, most of our vendors that we use are local, we use organic meats, organic masa. We typically try to use fresh seasonal ingredients, produce. We do go to the Campbell Farmer's Market and buy ingredients. I wouldn't say 100% of the menu is organic, but 100% of it is fresh. We do make it fresh, and we buy our masa from a company in Oakland that grounds our corn, it's organic, it's just a healthier way of eating Mexican food.
All right, thank you very much, that's all for now. Commissioner Bandami?
It appears at the San Jose location, you started out with only beer and wine, and progressed to full alcohol service. Can you explain the evolution to having full alcohol service at that location?
Yes. We started out with the beer and wine, because it was a new business for me, and although I focused a lot on the food, a lot of our customers would come in, and I think that pairing a margarita with Mexican food made sense, and we did have a lot of requests. It's not an establishment where people are there drinking like for hours or anything like that. I think it's just a request that we had from some customers, so we thought we would go this direction, and like I said, they're not, we don't have a full bar, it is strictly small cocktails that we cater, that we pair with the meals.
I have another question for you. So what is the square footage of the San Jose location, and how many seats?
The San Jose location is about 800 square feet.
Okay. And with that in mind, can you describe the lunch volume compared to the dinner volume?
The lunch volume in the Rose Garden is, I would say, probably about 30 covers, and then at night is typically when we're busier, and the evening.
Thank you.
There's, it's not a, it's not a, we're not in a section where we have downtown, you know, foot traffic, but we do get busy.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Seac?
At the time of the staff, the staff report was released, there was one section under community benefit where it stated that it had not been finalized, and that it would be discussed at the Planning Commission. Have you and staff had a chance to talk about the community benefit, and if so, could you share what should be in the staff report?
Yes, I spoke with Jennifer, and the community benefit is we propose to purchase a bench, however, I think I was working with her on that.
Actually, should I wait until we close to get further information on the community benefit?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, one more question with you with regard to the alcohol policy. In your San Jose locations, have you had any problem, have you had any need to call police, any violations of any sort?
None.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor?
I've been to Zona Rosa, and I've visited it in San Jose, and it is quite small. So a couple of things, in San Jose, you do not take reservations, is that correct? And I have, I'm going to say something, and then in the question, you can answer it one time.
We do take reservations.
You do take reservations, and you'll be doing, taking reservations here as well?
I think so. I mean, so far, it's worked, I'm not, I'm not really sure, I'm not to that point yet. The problem with San Jose is it's, it's really tiny.
It's very small, tiny.
And sometimes we run into issues, but so far, it's been fine. But a lot of people tend to use the social media, you know, open tables, so we found for us, because we were a new restaurant, it was a great way to bring in new business.
Right. What I'm concerned about, or if, I mean, I hope this happens for you, is that I think you'll be successful here, we hope so, and I'm wondering, because it's so small, in your plan, it doesn't look like there's a place that people could go in and wait for their table. So how will you control crowd overflow?
I mean, there is a-
Because I suspect that this will be a popular restaurant.
There is a bench outside. I mean, I think originally, our plan was maybe to put another seating inside, that was a bench-type seating, where people could wait. I know there's a, there's a bench the width of the building outside, I thought, and then there's another one, like, right, I think there's two benches outside. I'm not sure what the rules are as far as having customers wait outside.
Well, I think it's something that you probably need to address with staff. Would you ever consider using, a lot of restaurants use the buzzers, you know, they have little chips, and then they send you away, and you walk around, and then it buzzes, would you-
That's a great idea, yeah.
Okay, that would be a good thing to do, because it's a small area, you're right at the intersection where people are trying to, you know, cross the street, and cars are turning left and right, and I've seen it, a very crowded, it's very crowded on Sundays, you know, with the coffee roasting and everything. And so, I think you've answered my question. So you would consider using a electronic reservation?
The pager, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So now, I have just a couple of questions for you. If I understand you correctly, you think the evening business, probably here as well, will follow what has happened in Rose Garden, and that it will be a greater part of your business, is that correct?
I think so. I mean, I'm not, I think Los Gatos has more, it's more of a destination where people shop and have appointments, and they, I have a lot of the walk, walking foot traffic that I don't have today in the Rose Garden area, so, I mean, I'm hoping that I'm busy at lunch and dinner, but, I mean-
Only time will tell.
Yes.
I think that's what you're, what you're telling me. Well, then, can you walk me through, I just want to visualize the building, I'm, I was familiar with the previous restaurant as well that was in there. So as I look at your schematic floor plan, when I'm looking in the front window, am I seeing a table, if I understand correctly? I'm looking at a table, one table, that will be in that front window?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, and then beyond that will be additional tables, and then you have a long counter. Now, will people be able to see right into your kitchen? Is it-
No, we plan to build like a half-wall, you won't be able to see the kitchen.
Okay, so then, there's a long hallway that goes back to the offices and the refrigerators and things, but you also go by the kitchen, and I noticed that there is a, a long cabinet. What I was trying to visualize in my own mind is whether or not people were going to be able to sit anyplace and see how your kitchen is operating.
I don't plan to have like an open kitchen, no.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any bar-type of seating on that one counter that I'm looking at?
No.
Okay, all right, that was one of my questions. And I know that there are certain parking spaces that are available, that come with the tendency of this building, and so do you plan to have your employees, well, I should go back and ask you, how many employees do you think you will have at a time there, in terms of servers and kitchen staff?
I currently have, today at the location, I have three, so I would say maybe like five or six employees.
All right. And then, would you, would they be parking in the reserved parking for that building? What I'm, just, just so that you know where I'm coming from here, is that we have issues we often discuss of intensification in the downtown in terms of parking, and between customers and employees, so that's why I'm, I'm-
Right.
I'm attempting to think ahead with you.
I'm not really sure about the parking, like, rules for that space. There is no parking, oh, there is no parking, okay.
So there is no parking? Is that what you just stated?
No parking.
No parking available?
There is no on-site parking.
Okay. So five employees, around five employees at a time. And what time in the morning do you usually start?
We usually start about 7:00 a.m., but it's typically one employee, I think the majority come in about 10:00.
And then, I know you would close at 10:00 o'clock, and then your staff would be there later, obviously, they have to get ready.
Right.
Clean up and get ready for the next day. This question has come up many, many times, which is bottle disposal. So, just so you know, we, we've addressed this issue many times, so the bottles that are leftover, whether it's wine, beer, whatever, how, how or when will they be disposed of?
We usually dispose them at the location we have now every night, and somebody actually picks them up, we have a recycling.
So, and that would be at a certain time, after the, after the business closes?
Yes.
And the reason why I ask this question is because there, there are residences behind you, deeper into the street, but I ask the question because we have had it come up before that cracking and breaking of, of the bottles for recycling purposes is a problem. So when we talk about the conditions of approval, we probably will address that, so I just want you to be thinking about that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Talisfor?
Looking at the plan, I did have this, and I meant to ask you. The bathroom is, is clear, is way, is at the back of the restaurant?
Yes.
So, anyone needing to use that would walk past the kitchen?
Yes.
Okay, so my question to you is, is that kitchen door, that's where the deliveries will happen for the tables, in and out, is that the in-and-out door for the deliveries?
It would be the back door.
Well, no, 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 I mean, for the, delivering the food to the tables in the restaurant?
Oh, no, it's actually going to be, there's, part of the counter will remain, there's like a counter facing, that's where the food would be prepared, in the kitchen.
Is that, is, I'm seeing a rectangular shape near the door, is that-
It's not really near the door, it's actually, if you're facing the restaurant, it's to the right.
It's going to be to the right?
No, I didn't have that.
Maybe you could, thank you, thank you. Thank you for putting that up.
Here is, okay, so it would be here, this counter here.
That's going to be the service counter?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I just didn't, what I was hoping wouldn't happen is people coming out with food-
Right, 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 no.
Through the door would be running into people trying to use the bathroom, okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Pizzo, if I can go back just a moment to talk to you again about these parking spaces?
Okay.
You got that back in there, okay?
I think so. Yes.
There we go, good. We do have a letter from the Farwell family that indicates that, that your restaurant would be using five of the remaining eight parking spaces for the building. So I'm just confused that there, there will be parking for your employees onsite, or there will not be?
You know, I'm not, I don't have the answer to the parking, but-
Perhaps, do you, do you want to confer with your landlord for a moment? Thank you.
Through the chair, I think staff might be able to answer that for you.
Oh, okay. The parking for this building is part of the Parking Assessment District that our building and every building in town is paid into, and we have, I don't have the chart in front of me, but we have the allotted amount of seats based off our parking allotment, and we are not using all of our parking allotment, we are well under, the parking will be under three, and so that parking, just like everyone else in town, is part of the Parking Assessment District with all the parking lots in town that will, are available for employees, for patrons, just like most of the rest, most of the buildings that adjoin our building.
And then, Ms. Farwell, since you did speak, why don't you identify yourself, and then you can fill out a speaker's card?
Sue Farwell, 113 Edelen Avenue, Los Gatos.
All right, fine, and then just fill out a card for me, if you would. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, you can have a seat, and there are no other speakers wanting to speak on this issue. Is there anything, you would be given an additional three minutes to address us, so have you thought of anything that you wish you had mentioned, but you did not?
No, not right now.
All right.
Thank you.
So then you can have a seat, thank you. All right, Commissioners, we are closing the public portion of the public hearing, and are there any comments from the Commissioners? Commissioner Bandami?
This, this question is probably for staff, but obviously, this is a quality restaurant, it's described as such, and the town has different definitions for restaurants. So when we look at the traffic study, it's described as a high turnover sit-down restaurant, so is it high turnover, is it quality, and if we describe it as quality under traffic, would it make a difference in the traffic study? Because we're always concerned about traffic and parking in Los Gatos.
True. So our definitions of the different restaurant types are based on the seating time, and also whether they serve breakfast, lunch, dinner, et cetera. In this case, under the town's definitions of restaurants- the town's definitions of restaurants, they are a high turnover sit-down restaurant. Under non-town definitions of restaurants, such as in the restaurant world, it may be considered a quality restaurant. So for the town's definitions, parking and traffic, it is a high turnover sit-down restaurant.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sayak?
Thank you. Two questions of staff. The first with regard to the community benefit under conditions of approval. So on our conditions of approval currently, it says to be determined. But by understanding then, based on the applicant's speaking tonight, you have worked out something?
We have discussed the community benefit being the proposal of one public bench. We have not confirmed a location, so I can't confirm that this evening. But should the Planning Commission find that one bench is suitable for the community benefit, then yeah, you would need to modify that condition.
Okay. And then just a follow-up to that. There was a, a question back and forth with regard to overflow. When people are waiting, these benches are public benches. They could be for anyone, correct? Or are they designated for their approximate location?
Public benches.
Okay. And then one more question. On Monday at the town council meeting, there was some discussion about the alcohol beverage policy and it's, it's, I believe April, May-ish is the timeframe when it will be reintroduced to the town council. Can you just explain, if this application is approved with the current alcoholic beverage policy, then a new one is brought to council, they approve a new one, this applicant, as all other applicants, have six months? Or is this a specific condition that we're placing upon them?
The condition is typical of more recent applications involving alcoholic beverage service, where they would have six months to comply with the new alcoholic beverage policy.
Okay. And that, that has been explained with the applicant, so they know that within, that there may be a change. And I guess I should have asked that of the applicant. But do you know, have you had any conversations with the applicant about this?
The conditions are provided to the applicant as draft early on in the review process. We haven't had a conversation specific to that condition, but they do have the opportunity to ask us any questions if there's any concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Birch?
Since we're asking about the parking and you thought you might be able to explain it, would you go into some detail about the parking situation?
Yes. So the subject space is part of one commercial space on a larger property. And that larger property has Parking Assessment credit, credits for 39 parking spaces. This particular use that's before you tonight, based on the square footage of the space, has a certain number of spaces, but the use tonight with the proposed seating requires 6.5 parking spaces. Based on the proposed use this evening and the existing uses in the other commercial spaces, they do have enough parking.
Commissioner Talisfor?
So addressing the alcoholic beverage policy again, the CUP, of course, will run with the land. And if, if this is granted and would be granted by the town council, correct. But because they're so limited in what they want to serve, can that be conditioned as part of the alcohol beverage policy or CUP in this case?
You could. You could recommend a condition that specifies the type of alcohol be in the condition for the use. It's something that you would want to consider, whether you would want the use to have the flexibility or not have the flexibility to change their alcoholic beverage service with or without coming back to the town to modify their conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you very much. That's, that's good information. I'm hoping that we can weigh in on that.
Commissioner Bandami?
Following up on Commissioner Talisfor, could it also be conditioned that there could be no standalone bar allowed?
It could.
Thank you.
And then I have a question for you. I note the absence in the conditions of approval of any regulation of time of the bottle disposal, the recycling. And I know we've addressed that with several other restaurants in the downtown. So, so I'm not sure if the, if it was deleted, never put in, you didn't think it was necessary. I'm not sure what, what, what the parameters are around it not being here.
It was never put in and could certainly be added.
And do you have a recommendation as to what should be put in, similar to other restaurants in town? That I, I know we've done this in the past.
We have, and we would use the same language that we've used in other conditional use permits. I don't have that exact language in front of me, but it does speak to the hours between which bottles could be disposed of.
Commissioner Talisfor?
And I think also it addressed something about the container that the bottles would go in so that it wouldn't be this, what do I say, you know, so that you could really hear it, you know, it would really emphasize the sound. I don't even
Well, I don't know that we can control West Valley Recycling and what containers they provide for trash to go into or recycling to go into. But those are issues that we can address and all of these things can become part of your motion as this moves forward to the council, so they can address that. And staff can potentially provide additional information.
Right, okay. I mean, don't, doesn't most liquor come in boxes anyway? I mean, it could be put it, you know, maybe put back in the boxes and then put in the recycling. I don't know.
Sure, I mean, depending on how, what kind of quantities you're ordering, I assume.
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right. Go ahead.
Unless there's more discussion. Okay. I would move to approve conditional use permit U-14-002 at 81 West Main Street. I can make, it's actually, we're going to make this motion as a recommendation of approval, subject to the conditions. And I would invite my fellow commissioners to add any conditions. We can consider them. I can make the required findings. Oh, I, wait, let me, let me get back to this. Requesting, this is for, requesting approval to modify a conditional use permit to increase seating and provide full alcoholic beverage service for a restaurant, Zona Rosa, on property zone C2LHP, and the APN is 529-01-025. I can make the findings required for SEQA. I can make required findings for a conditional use permit that the proposed use of the property is essential. Oh, and this is required by Section 2920-190 of the Town Code for granting a conditional use permit. The proposed use of the property is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, and that the use would add variety to the existing Mexican restaurant concepts currently in the downtown area with a light eating concept that would be well received by locals and visitors. And it would really, I think, encourage a high turnover volume to more of a small sit-down restaurant. The proposed, and it would also encourage light eating along with the right eating because of the ingredients and the careful consideration by the owners of how they prepare the food and where they purchase it. And the proposed use will not impair the integrity and character of the zone in that the use will be in a commercial zone, and that the closing is early enough by 10:00 PM that it wouldn't conflict, I don't believe, with the town's late-night alcohol policy. The proposed use would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare, and that the use will be subject to provisions of the alcohol beverage policy and conditions placed on the permit will mitigate potential impacts, and that the alcohol is intended, and this is important to me, to complement the food. And I would agree with that. And the proposed use to the property is in harmony with the various elements or objectives of the general plan and purposes of the Town Code. I can also make the required finding for the redevelopment plan for the central Los Gatos redevelopment project area, and that it's consistent in that the subject property is designated commercial and the proposed use falls under commercial uses. So I would also like to add as a condition that we, this would not include a standalone bar, as we heard from the applicant, and that, and we can talk about this, but I would like to encourage and, or maybe, I don't know how you make it as a condition, that electronic pagers be used in case, to control or manage overflow of, of, you know, people that are going to the restaurant. And then also I would like to include that the town staff work to come up with language for bottle disposal. Okay? Did I forget anything? Yes.
If I could just, before we can have further discussion, we need a second to that motion. Is anyone willing to make a second? Yes.
I'll second.
All right. And then you would like to ask the maker of the motion to make an addition to the motion?
Yes, just that it sounds like the applicant has worked with staff on the community benefit item of the bench, that that be included in the conditions.
Yes, please include the bench in the conditions. Thank you, I would agree with that.
Well, Mr. Paulson, just for the benefit of the commission, perhaps you could just repeat back to us the motion that we're going to vote on?
Sure. So the motion is to recommend approval to the town council of the conditional use permit before you, with some modified and/or additional conditions that involve no standalone bar, that direction be provided, that the applicant consider using electronic pagers for crowd control, for waiting patrons, that the bottle disposal, similar to other conditional use permits that we have approved or the council has approved prior, be added, as well as the delineation of the specific community benefit, which in this case is park bench.
Thank you, Mr.
Or public bench, sorry, not park bench necessarily.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Are there any other, any discussion of the motion in the second? Yes, Commissioner Sayak?
I will support the application. It's a great application. I'm looking forward to it, should town council approve it. I do want to make special notice that we did take special attention to the parking spaces. At first glance, there's always that big jump from 6 to 26. And so I want to make it clear that we did look, it met the Parking Assessment District criteria, and that those, those criteria have been addressed and that there should be adequate parking spaces.
Any other comments? All right, I would comment however, that I am happy to support the motion and that, and welcome a new business to town and wish you a great deal of success. So now let's have a vote. All in favor? Aye. None opposed? Mr. Paulson, next steps?
There are not appeal rights because this is just a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the town council. Following this meeting, the item will be agendized on the next possible town council agenda, and the notices will be sent out again to the neighbors and a public hearing will be held for a final decision.
Thank you. And Ms. Pizzo and Ms. Farwell, if I could just ask that you fill out the cards before you leave today? Thank you. We now are going to move on to continued other business, and this would be agenda item number three. It's a matter that has been continued from the February 26, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. And as I understand the agenda item, the commission is being asked to confirm town staff's interpretation of the sign ordinance regarding the definition of a tenant directory sign and to adopt a policy to define a tenant directory sign. And you don't look like Ms. Mosley over there, so.
I'd just like to introduce Monica Wren. She's Economic Vitality Manager for the town. I've asked her to come forward. Ms. Mosley couldn't be with us this evening. As you see with the original report that came with this, for this item, a subsequent desk item for that meeting was continued to this date to try to help facilitate some of the members that are interested in this topic to be able to speak on the items. And then a follow-up report and desk item have been submitted for this evening, offering additional options for the commission to explore and consider when looking at this topic. You know, report's pretty clear. These types of signs from staff's perspective are not permitted by the Town Code in certain zones, which in this case is the CH and C1. We have a number of interested parties that would like to see staff's interpretation loosen to help facilitate the needs of their tenants for their spaces. And so staff has provided you our interpretation of, our historic, historical interpretation of this, and asked originally to have you adopt that. Following that, we've had conversations with Economic Vitality and the Town Manager's Office to look for other options to broaden the commission's options for this evening as far as the discussion. And this by no means is a limitation on any other permutations that any commissioner may think of. The bottom line is whether or not either of these interpretations seems viable from the commissioner's perspective. That concludes staff's report. There's a lot of background information, obviously, relating to the code and the commercial design guidelines for this topic. And I'm sure there are, as you see, a number of speakers that would like to provide input for this evening.
Are there any questions of staff before we begin? Yes, Commissioner Sayak?
When this was first agendized, we, it was a late meeting and we continued it to this meeting. And I do recall there were several speakers. Did you get comments from them and/or are they present so that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. I do have a question. In the staff report, page two of the last, March 26 staff report, page two, let's see, I don't know, it's a couple, you're explaining, I have a question for you, but I'm gonna read what it says here. Planning staff has historically considered multi-tenant ground signs and tenant directory, directory ground signs to be the same type of signs. Can you tell us what the similarities are and why you, why that is how you interpret it?
Well, because if you have more than one tenant on a ground sign, then we consider it a multi-tenant, which also could be considered a tenant directory ground sign. So that's where our interpretation comes from. There are specific, there's no specific definition in the Town Code of tenant directory, ground sign. We do have a building directory section in the Town Code, but not a tenant directory from the ground sign perspective. The confusion comes in or was exacerbated by the adoption of the Commercial Design Guidelines, which have a section that says, as I'm sure you're aware, that multi-tenant ground signs are strongly discouraged, but should they be allowed, then you can have up to three tenants. So those, we look at those functionally as the same, even though they have different terms. So that's, that's where the challenges come in.
So, can I have a follow-up? And so would it make sense to somehow have both policies reflective of each other, instead of, you know, someone reading the Town Code sign regulation and then saying, well, see what it says here, and then you're coming back and saying, yes, but here's what it says here? Is this where, is this where the conflict is coming?
Technically, it is where the perceived conflict is. From the town's standpoint, the zoning, the zoning code sign regulations override the Commercial Design Guidelines. They have a stronger force. So even though the Commercial Design Guidelines say you, you, even they're discouraged, you can have a multi-tenant ground sign, but that's intended to mean only in the zones where they're already allowed by the code, which does not include C1 or CH.
So would it help to somehow put that into the Town Code regulations?
Depending on the outcome of this evening and which direction we go, then yes, either one or multiple things, either modifying the Commercial Design Guidelines or, and/or modifying the sign code.
Okay. And this is just a recommendation tonight, is that correct?
This is not. The Planning Commission has the authority to adopt the policy on this matter.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a question of the Economic Vitality Manager, and that is, I, have you met with multiple building owners and/or tenants? Or is this based on just this issue that came up and now you're trying to resolve it?
We, I've met with multiple building owners who interpret it that a directory would include, would be something that include all of their tenants. And that's, it started with one owner and then has kind of spread to other owners that I've met with who also looked at it as a tenant directory would be something that included everybody in the building, not limited to three.
And then the other question I have from, of you is, in these kinds of discussions, was there an emphasis placed on including the logo of a business in the signage or was there an emphasis placed on including the logo of a business in the signage, or were the building owners amenable to having a, what I would call a monument sign, with names all consistently stated versus logos and different font sizes that matched logos, et cetera?
The building owners that I've spoken with specifically on that topic have been amenable to following the sign design guidelines that allow up to three in the same font, same color, as it's stated on, under what the allowance would be. I haven't had a specific conversation about logos with anybody. My understanding is, most of them are amenable to what is in the sign design guidelines.
And then I have one more question for you, and that is, has there, in your conversations or your experience, has there been a difference of opinion between those building owners that have more retail-type of businesses versus those building owners that have more office space, or tenants?
Typically, the ones that have the highest interest in this are those who either have a retailer or a service that's within the building, sometimes office. What has come into question is, you know, someone's driving down the street, and they're looking for this building, a lot of the buildings sit perpendicular to the street, so it's difficult to necessarily see what is on there. For example, one of the buildings has, I believe, like a tailor that you can't see from the street, so by having it on the monument sign, the property owners feel that it gives someone coming down the street the ability to know what's in that building.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Bandami.
Question of staff, do you have any business owners insisting that the policy not be reinterpreted?
I have not heard from any, no.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Follow-up to what you were explaining, Ms. Wren, can you give us an example? Do you have any concrete examples that you could give us?
In regards to a type of business, or in regards to a building?
In regards to a building with businesses who want, that want to, you know, list all the, you know, the businesses within that property? And is it more than three usually?
One of the building owners who's here tonight, I believe that's going to be speaking, has, I believe, 14 suites within the building, and they're only looking to put three on the monument sign, or on the ground sign, and that would be the three that don't, that need a presence for their service level, but don't have the ability to have a presence on the street. So they do, my understanding is, he would also have a sign that lists everybody and their suite numbers, but is just looking for those three on the sign, the ground sign itself.
Any other comments? All right, let's open the public portion of the public meeting, and my first speaker, I'm calling Cameron Madigan. Please step forward, state your name and your address, and you have, you can speak up to three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Cameron Madigan, I'm from Bingham McCutcheon, my address is 3 Embarcadero Center in San Francisco, California 94111. I'm joined this evening by Frank Cardini, he is with Stanford Hospital and Clinics, they're a client of mine, and they're a tenant in one of the buildings here in Los Gatos. We are involved in this, and on a personal level, in that we have applied for a sign and have a sign at our, at the building where we are located. The issue for us is that there are multiple tenants in the building, and multiple tenants who want to be on that sign. And we've talked to staff about that, and said, you know, is there a way that we can put together the sign, so that we can, everyone who wants to be on there, up to the three that are listed in the guidelines, and following the, you know, well-designed and clear, and also, you know, fitting with the character, and providing information on the tenants in the building, and directing patrons there, and then, but not obviously cluttering it, or making it too difficult to read. And in discussing that with staff, we were informed of the interpretation that staff has, meaning that the tenant directory is the same thing as multi-tenant. And in discussing things with the Economic Vitality Manager, we came to the understanding that there was, this was not just affecting us, it's affecting lots of people in the town. And looking through the code and the regulations, I put forth a letter to you explaining our position, it doesn't seem like that there's a reason for reading these two terms to be the exact same, and that your guidelines are very clear, that you want nice clear signs, you want them well-designed, you don't want clutter, you want it, make it easy, you don't want them, you know, lining the street and detracting from the town. And it seems that having a well-designed sign that is approved on the design guidelines is consistent with that, and can also be multi-tenant. The other point on the guidelines is that they are more restrictive than the actual regulation, and so they're, they're meant to interpret the regulation, not to be broadening of the regulation. And so, our reading is that it's consistent, that you could have a multi-tenant sign that's consistent with both the regulations and with the guidelines, and therefore, we're here this evening just to encourage you to consider and adopt the second, second, the modified policy statement that was presented for this meeting, and not for the previous meeting, and that is that the tenant directory sign is any sign which advertises more than one business, and includes the business names, addresses, and/or suite numbers, meaning that if it had up to three or multiple tenants, it wouldn't necessarily be a tenant directory. Thank you.
Thank you. And did you wish to speak as well, sir? Then, I do have a question, any other, any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Talisfor, and then I'll ask my question.
I wanted to just clarify, is in Exhibit A, is this, is this what the sign is that you're talking about?
Right, so Exhibit B is what the sign that was approved by the, by the Planning Commission, and was installed. And then Exhibit B.
That's on the backside.
That's on the backside.
Okay.
Just to make sure, so this one, is Exhibit B, so that's the one tenant, you can see that on there. So, in discussions with the landlord and the other tenants in the building...
Ms. Madigan, if you could take the microphone with you?
I'm so sorry.
That we have this properly recorded, thank you.
Yes. So in discussions with the landlord, another tenant in the building, Los Gatos Medical Center, that's an urgent care center, wanted to also be on the sign. And so, we went back to our design sign consultant, and said, you know, we've already spent the money and put, built this sign, it's on a wood frame, you know, could you design something for us that would meet the qualifications of the, and guidelines, but clearly state that there are two tenants in the building? And there's concern, just on a base level, that you, we want to make sure that people know that there are these two different entities in the building, and that they serve as different people, to help alleviate confusion for people who, if it's one or the other, we don't want people thinking that they're getting to the urgent care center and arriving at the hospital and clinics, and we don't want people to think that they're, you know, trying to find the hospital and clinics of Stanford, and all they can see is the urgent care center. And so, there was a confusion point, really, that we were trying to avoid, and it was in trying to resolve this, and taking this proposal, or a similar proposal of this, to the planner, they, they then said, well, you're, there's this other interpretation that we have, and we're having multiple businesses, and talking about this, and put us in contact with the Economic Vitality Manager, and that this issue is being addressed by you.
Thank you. I, I was actually going to ask you that question, I happen to be at a retail business across from this building, and when I myself saw urgent care in Stanford Hospital, I asked myself if they were, if Stanford was offering urgent care. So I, I just want you to know that personally, I had that experience myself, that you were just indicating, so, thank you. Any other questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next called Jim Foley. Mr. Foley, please state your name and address.
Yeah, Jim Foley, 15425 Los Gatos Boulevard. I'm actually here representing McCarthy Ranch, so we're the landlord of a building on Los Gatos Boulevard that, it runs kind of perpendicular to the street, we're running into the exact same problems, where we have tenants sort of in the rear of the building that don't have any signage on the street, and they want to get a presence out there, so we're kind of supportive of the modified definition that would allow us to build a sign that could take one or two or three of those tenants, and give them a presence up on the street, simply for wayfinding and allowing them to advertise their business.
Are there any questions? I actually have a question for you. How do, how does your company, as a owner of a building, decide, of multiple tenants, decide which three are going to appear on that monument?
In our particular case, I think there's five tenants in the building total, and there's only a couple of them that it makes sense for, offering financial services, and then the building that's actually up on the street has its own signage that's been approved for, you know, being up on the boulevard. So, we're kind of a, a unique case, where it's not going to be that difficult for us to, to decide.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, Todd, and the last name is spelled T-R-E, and it looks like...
T-R-E.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address.
Sorry, my handwriting's atrocious. My name's Todd Schreckel, I'm a resident here in town, 34 East Main Street, so we're nearly neighbors. I'm here representing the property owners of 634 North Santa Cruz, and when Monica was referring to those building, the building owner here in town who has approximately 14 tenants, and only seeking to place three of those tenants on the, on a ground sign, that would be us. Our building, as I mentioned, is actually just north of the DMV, it runs perpendicular to Santa Cruz Avenue, we just painted it white, used to be known as Greenfield Plaza here in town, had quite the notorious history, until our ownership picked it up. So, we just recently put about $200,000 into the building, we hired Pro Signs to come in, and actually designed a monument sign for us, and also update the signage in and around the building. Unfortunately, when we submitted our application, we hit a roadblock with staff, saying, hey, we've got some confusion here, this is not permitted. So, I'm here this evening to basically tell you that, you know, I would love to have you, I strongly encourage you to concur with our interpretation, that a tenant directory sign is any sign which advertises more than one business, and includes the business name, address, and/or suite numbers, a tenant directory sign is not a building directory sign, which is defined by code. Making this interpretation will allow us to proceed with designing that ground sign, which could allow us to have up to three businesses listed. This would help our mom-and-pop tenants have a greater exposure on North Santa Cruz Avenue, and ultimately help them grow their respective businesses. And so, that's in align with what we try to attempt within the town's general plan, from an economic vitality perspective, and having good, strong business, mom-and-pop local business here, and this will allow them to have a presence on Santa Cruz Avenue, which they don't have. If a car is traveling southbound on Santa Cruz Avenue, you'd actually drive right past the building, you'd see Chicago Title on the front, but you wouldn't actually see the three retail tenants that we have that are actually facing south towards the DMV. So, we believe that by placing signage there will ultimately allow them to generate more customers, more revenue, and ultimately a healthier environment.
Thank you. So, we do have some questions for you. Commissioner Talisfor.
Can you explain to me, your building, and there's a monument sign there now, isn't there a name on that building?
There's a temporary sign, there used to be a sign there with the address, and it said, said Greenfield Plaza, and that was it, and that was right in front of Chicago Title.
So, can you describe your building? If I were to enter the building, is there a main door into all the other offices, or...
No, there's not, it's almost like, it's like a Spanish-style...
Describe your building to me, and how, as a person, I would find a business?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's a Spanish-style building, I would call it, Santa Barbara-esque type, a building that has outdoor walkways, and so there is no, there's no interior corridor, if you will, it's all exterior. Part of our plan is to go in and create what we call a tenant directory sign, which is in a couple of major focal points within the building, where the stairs are coming up out of the basement, or the lower level, or where people tend to convene, we would have a sign there that has the name of the building, which now we call North Point Plaza, and we'd have a list of all the tenants within the building, all 14 of them, along with the suite numbers and directional arrows that indicate how to gain access to those suites.
So, you're telling us that you are planning on creating an interior directory sign? Is that correct?
There's currently one there, and we would just be updating it.
But you'll be adding, adding to them, and there'll be areas near staircases, or where...
Yeah, there's only two areas within the entire building that will have that.
So how, would you explain to me why you feel it's necessary to have a suite number on the outside of a monument sign, when you will be taking care of that interior, you know, interior, inside the building?
Yeah, just for me to be clear, I don't have any intention whatsoever to have a suite number on the ground sign out in front of the building. I merely would like to have the name of the building, North Point Plaza, along with the three retail tenants on that sign, in consistent, inconsistent font, no logos, none of that, just so when people are driving either north or southbound on Santa Cruz Avenue, people know that, hey, there's a, there is a alterations in cleaners here.
So are you telling us that, that your tenants, or your, these three tenants...
Yes.
Would be using this sign as an advertisement?
I, I wouldn't call it...
Not only, not just identification?
Well, I mean, it's, yes, it's identification, but it's when someone's driving down the street, and they've typed in their phone, they're looking for Los Gatos Snails, they can see, when they're driving down the street and they don't see 634, they can visually see Los Gatos Snails, and know that that's the, that's where they need to park, or pull into the building.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I, I do have a couple of questions, I want to go back and, and ask you, I am familiar with your building, and so I do understand the, the tenant directories by the stairways, and how you access different offices. My question is more, right now, what you're saying is that you want, you would want to focus on your three retail tenants...
That's correct.
Because they face the parking lot of the DMV.
That's correct, they have no exposure.
If you have a major, let's just say, a high-tech startup come in on the ground floor, or second floor, or whatever, that wants that kind of signage on the monument sign, then are you going to take someone off and put someone on?
No, it's, when their names are there, it's hard to pull them off.
Well, I know that, I just didn't know, I, I'm thinking about the ordinance sign and...
Right.
And trading out, I, so I'm really just asking a, a really a broader question, but...
Understood. So there is currently a, a sign planned that's in place for that building, that does Chicago Title, for example, due to the fact that they have X number of linear feet along Santa Cruz Avenue, provides them with X number of linear square, or actually, X number of square feet of signage. And so, based on their positioning within the building, would give them other sign opportunities on the building, not necessarily on the ground sign that we're seeking.
Okay. That, that answers my question. Again, it was just a general, broad question, and you happen to be the person up here...
Perfect.
With a building that I could ask the question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of, oh, okay, all right, thank you. We're now going to close the public portion of the public hearing, and are there any additional questions of staff? Yes, Commissioner Talisfor.
There, there is, and, and maybe this, let me ask the question. Could I ask you, what is the purpose of a ground sign? Is it to identify a business, an address, or is it to attract business to the, to the building?
I would say, depending on who you talk to, it would be any and/or all of the above.
I'm talking, but I'm going to talk to you, the staff.
All of the above.
So it's for everything? So, when it says here that ground signs, can I read what it says here in the commercial design guidelines? "Primary ground signs are low signs that assist motorists in finding businesses along auto-oriented streets, where businesses are separated from the street front by parking or large landscaped areas." It doesn't say anything about attracting. So, to me, I don't interpret a ground sign as attracting a business. I interpret it, according to these words, as finding, locating a business that somebody already knows.
Which is a perfectly reasonable assumption.
Okay. So to me, or, and I, I'd like to hear from everybody, I'm sure we will, but if it's, there seems to be a built-in conflict then, with what's stated, what the need is by businesses, and what we're doing here in town, and that's where I'm seeing a conflict.
Commissioner Bandami.
That also includes the issue of the...
That also includes the issue of the, the logos, because, you know, we've got signs where I think you want the logos on here, whereas the last speaker said he wasn't interested in having the logos on the sign.
Maybe if I could just follow up with that particular question, because what I was thinking about was the, the small, I don't want to call it a strip center, but the small retail center, which is almost, I think it is, no, it's not exclusively, I'm thinking where Subway and the donut places, and there's some other businesses, but there is a professional services business in there as well. I believe it's a dentist. That seems to have every name and logo on a monument sign. And then we move on to, would there only be three in the future, or is there an exception when the, the, when the property is mostly retail?
So the question isn't one of retailer service from the planning department's perspective. There are many signs, as was outlined in the report, that are illegal and/or don't comply with the current, or even if this is modified, depending on the action of the planning commission, won't comply with that either. Staff doesn't have the resources to go through all of those. Many of those have been pointed out by numerous property owners regarding the challenges when, you know, that's part of the challenge, when staff says, well, here's our interpretation, so this isn't possible, and then they provide us, you know, 45 businesses in town that have similar type signs. So there's a number of issues. Some are illegal, some are in planned developments, which were approved as part of the planned development, some of them are very old and predate the commercial design guidelines, for sure. And then the interpretation may have been different then, or as part of prior planning commission and/or council actions for some of those centers when they were built, they may have been part of that specific approval. But that is an inordinate amount of staff hours to go through and research and ascertain which one of those scenarios each of those signs fall into. The reality is, eventually, maybe we're going to get back more towards a, or get back to a proactive type of code and compliance. We're not there now, but, you know, as these issues are brought to our attention, we try to deal with them.
If I could just follow up, then what I'm, what I'm sorting through is that an office building with a name to it needs an identifiable monument sign. A building that has multiple tenants needs a tenant directory. And the, the monument sign guidelines now restrict, restricted to three names on the monument, correct? But the tenant directory can be any size that accommodates, if it's 15 tenants, it's 15 tenants. If it's two, it's two. And that is usually placed against the building or attached to the building versus the monument sign being freestanding. Am I getting close to where we are here?
You're getting close, but it's a lot of cross-pollination of terminology. What we allow in terms of what I think you're saying, it's tenant directory, is our building directory. So those are exempt, the ones you place on the face of the building or inside the corridor, as Mr. Schreckel was speaking to. Let me just read this. So building directory, they don't require a sign permit at all, but they have specific parameters that you have to meet, and I'm going to go ahead and read that for you. So building directory is for buildings with more than six tenants, the sign having an area not over nine square feet, affixed flat against the wall of the building, which only show the name or address of the persons or entities occupying the building. That's a building directory. Those are exempt from, those do not require a sign permit, but they have strict parameters that surround those. A multi-tenant sign, as reflected in the Commercial Design Guidelines, which is not defined either by code or in the Commercial Design Guidelines, is where they're discouraged, but potentially could allow up to three tenants. The tenant directory, ground signs, which maybe uses a tenant directory as reflected in the town code, also is not defined by the town code. So staff's interpretation has been that where you cannot have a tenant directory sign, which is the C1 or CH, that you cannot have more than one tenant on a ground sign. Otherwise, it becomes multi-tenant. So it is challenging, confusing. Ultimately, it's up to the commission to decide, you know, where their comfort level is with that, specifically in these two zones, because it's technically permitted in all of the other zones, which office is one of. And so those office buildings are allowed to have multiple tenants on their ground sign.
Just if I could clarify, it's, it is technically permitted in the other zones, it being?
It being a multi-tenant ground sign or multi-tenant directory ground sign.
All right. And when we talk about tenant directories, in the guidelines, we're talking about plaque signs.
In the guidelines, those are talking about ground signs with multi-tenants. And I'll get the exact words for that. The plaques on the buildings is what is referred to in the town code as building directories.
Right. Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Seac.
Thank you for that clarification. Do you have the history why C1 and CH was excluded?
No.
I've been trying to figure that out.
Yeah, staff tried to do a little bit of digging and inquiring with some of the members, past and present of the community development department that frequent town hall to see if we could ascertain that information. We're not able to.
Okay. And this is where I'm, I'm thinking, my thinking is so far. Without specific reasons why it has been excluded from those areas, I don't see why we're not equalizing the playing field for all of the business. If it's legally permitted in certain areas, and there's no solid justification that has been presented to us why it was placed in C1 and CH, excuse me, omitted, and I'm sure there must have been a valid reason, but I just can't think of it at the moment, and there doesn't seem to be anything in our own paperwork, there's nothing that makes me think we should continue to exclude it just based on a policy that has been freestanding. So at this time, based on what I've heard and what I've seen, I would be inclined to move forward with what staff has presented as their proposed modification contained in item number three on the second page.
Commissioner Birch.
I completely agree. I don't see anything behind the reason to exclude those areas. And to add to that, as a town, we're trying to keep our smaller businesses here, and we see rents increasing, and oftentimes what happens is the smaller business owners are going to not be renting the street front businesses. It's more expensive, they're going to be in the back, they're not going to be as visible. Providing something that lets people know they're there is only going to increase the viability of that business and increase the chances of them staying in the town rather than leave or just shut down. So I can only see this as a positive thing for the town to include these two zones into this.
Commissioner Talisfor.
In, in looking at this, I, I think that there's a real, the conflict is that's, signs are advertisements, but they're not, they cannot be the only advertisement, okay? And throughout the, you know, the, our Commercial Design Guidelines devoted 15 pages to signage. So obviously, to this town, that's extremely important. And I think that it, it really does take, we should consider it quite seriously. And we can't change some of the craziness I've seen in these monument signs at the moment, but I would hope that someday we will clean that up. But I, I cannot, I, I might agree with all of this, but I'm not sure that these tenant signs or monument signs should include the suite numbers, because suites can sometimes change with, the building will remain the same, the addresses on the building will remain the same, but sometimes within the building, the suites change. They're modified because someone else moves in, and then how hard is that for the owner of the building to change what their, you know, change the suites all the time? And how up-to-date will that be? How much of a problem will that cause, is my, is my question. I'm not sure that we need a suite number out in the front if they, if buildings and offices can already apply them to their, you know, somewhere else on the building. When you are coming, when I'm coming anyway, my experience in looking for addresses, I know where in these office buildings I need to go. I know, I already know the business probably. Very few times, when I'm driving down the street, and I, and I would take one of the centers here on Santa Cruz Avenue that has a plethora of businesses listed, I hardly see the sign going even 20 miles an hour. I mean, there, it's too small, and there's too many of them. I couldn't, it doesn't advertise it to me. It looks messy. It's that visual chaos that you talked about, that we're trying to eliminate. So, and as I read through these guidelines, which I really think, we did a good job on them, for signage, it really says to limit the information, and it's really true about signs. It's, you don't need a lot of information there. In fact, the more information, it just clutters and you're not reading it anyway from a car. So I would tend to agree with this, and I would like to have staffs weigh in again on this, but if we could eliminate suite numbers and, and just leave it with the three things that we need, which would be the, the address, the business name, all to, you know, all in the same color. They have a perfect example of it here on page 65 at, under 6.8.2. That's a beautifully done sign, and it has three different businesses listed. And if that, if the signs could look like that, it'd be great. Anyway, that's my opinion right now.
Well, I can answer that.
Would you?
I think it was a question.
Yes, it was a question. Thank you.
So, and if I step out of line, Commissioner Seac or Birch, let me know. But I think the interpretation that they seem to be in favor of actually specifically does not allow you to put suite numbers on the ground sign or specific addresses. So you may have a scenario where you have a block of addresses, you know, 350 to 380 North Santa Cruz Avenue at the top with maybe a identifier for the center name, but then you just have three tenants and potentially their logos. To your point, they would, we would be looking for them to comply with the Commercial Design Guidelines, which is the, limited to logo and name with similar typeface, color, background. So it's not going to be the, all the individual, individualized tenant, you know, corporate colors and things along those lines.
The, the one thing I will say, though, is that the, that we had a speaker tonight from the, oh, was this, well, anyway, it was about the Stanford Hospital, this sign and Exhibit A. I will say that I'm not sure, and I'm wondering if perhaps information like this that could be very critical to somebody who is looking for urgent care, but that it happened to be in the same, you know, clinic with another business, that I would think that we would be able to grant an exception in that case, because it's medical and.
I mean, I think that's part of the challenge. I mean, clearly, they've shown you an example that clearly does not meet the Commercial Design Guidelines standards.
Exactly.
So here we have another potential interpretation by staff and/or the planning commission. So this is, again.
I totally understand.
Part of the challenge.
So how, so is there, could there be a subset of the policy or, you know, a modification to the policy for emergency, you know, type, critical type care places? I, I don't know. Is that?
I, I, there could. If the commission wanted to go there, I think the challenge would be staff's not prepared to provide any real solid background as far as what that would be limited to, how that would be limited, you know, what businesses that would be. So I understand your general.
Right.
Idea and concern, but I would not be prepared this evening to delve into that.
Feel it. And I just have one other question, if I may.
All right.
And this is really, this is sort of, it's about on page 65 of the Commercial Design Guidelines under 6.8.2. Would it help at all when it says to limit the information on each sign? Would it help at all, under A, it says ground signs should generally be limited to the following information? Would it help at all to either take that out or leave it in? Or how could you see that helping you with your interpretation?
I don't see the challenge with the interpretation in A. I see the challenge with the interpretation in B, where it says, display of the three tenants may be considered for small ground signs, so long as the sign and background color is common throughout, and the type, style, and logo colors of each tenant are the same.
Why is that a challenge?
On that sign that you just showed in reference to the.
Right.
Doesn't comply. So it's a challenge from staff, because that sign wouldn't comply. And if you.
Oh, this one. You mean Exhibit A.
Correct. So if you looked at Exhibit A, and they had the same typeface, same type style, same background, but they had their own.
Right.
It runs into the challenge that the speaker is concerned about, which we totally understand and we agree.
And I, and I, and I would agree with that, except that in this case, because this is urgent care, is this the only, let me ask this question. I didn't ask of the person that was here presenting this. Is this the only sign for that urgent care facility on the building? Or is there a door? I, I haven't noticed it.
I live right around the corner from that. Past the sign, anywhere you are near that building, there's red signs that say urgent care and with arrows that lead you to the hallway to that.
Thank you.
It's pretty clear.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's clear.
And that would help me in my thinking. Thank you.
Counselor?
I would mention, though, that those signs are currently in code enforcement. So the signs that are there for the urgent care are currently within code enforcement complaint and actions being taken against that property.
So, Mr. Paulson, what, what exactly do you need from us tonight? Do you need a full motion that we're accepting or not?
Yeah, we would prefer. We would prefer a motion, and if it's to accept the revised language as stated in the report for the, tonight's hearing on page two, then we would look for a motion in a second. Additionally, if the commission wanted to provide further direction on some of these other topics, as Commissioner Talisfor has spoke to, then we can look at trying to fit some of that into our workload and potentially bringing back some other further clarifications specifically relating to those matters.
Commissioner Seac, do you want to weigh in on this?
I have a quick question of staff. Currently, if an applicant does have a question, using again, the desk item, urgent care, the 16400 as an example, if they wanted an exception to what is currently on the books, what process would they need to go through to show that it's an extenuating circumstance?
Well, I mean, I, I think ultimately, they could come before you. We could have that come before the planning commission, and they can make an interpretation. Just gets to trying to limit or control all of the numerous nuances that we see on a daily, weekly basis.
Sure.
But that possibility, I believe, does, is permitted. I would have to check on that, because I know there are certain things you can't get exceptions to.
Unfortunately, I'm not quite up on our zoning code right now. Many towns and cities do have what's called sign exceptions, where it would come in front if they wanted a sign exception. I don't believe we have that in our zoning code right now. So it would have to be appeal from the, from the determination of the staff, which right now, the policy is it's not allowed. To bring you a little bit of history on the urgent care, because, you know, I, I want to make sure you understand that, is, is they did have an approved sign, that was the Stanford One sign on the monument. That sign that was approved, and I believe it's in your package, was removed, and then the urgent care sign went up in its place, which does not meet your design guidelines. So that sign is currently in enforcement, and we've asked them to comply and provide the one monument sign for either the urgent care or for the Stanford. the one monument sign for either the urgent care or for the Stanford, because the multiple wasn't allowed at this point in time until the interpretation was done. There's other sign issue enforcements dealing with A-frame signs and other things. So that's a little bit more of what we're trying to do with this property. And also, the confusion in whether, if you do allow the multiple signs, then it could move forward with the sign that's in your package, as long as that did conform with your guidelines. So I hope that explains a little bit better where we are with that property.
If I could ask Mr. Paulson a question, because I am very, I am very interested in leveling the playing field between all of these districts. And so are you, did I understand you correctly, that we need to give you the direction to investigate that? Or you are already investigating it and would bring us back some findings? I'm not sure where we stand there. I know you see the problem, so I'm not sure if you're addressing it, and we will address it at a later time.
So this is kind of a two-stage process, potentially. Tonight, you can adopt a policy with the revised language that will allow multi-tenant ground signs in the C1 and CH, so long as they don't have address, specific address and/or suite numbers on them. And we will move forward with that, which will satisfy probably a number of property owners. What I was speaking to in coming back was more of these other, more fine or subtle modifications to what the guidelines currently allow, which, for instance, the exhibit B does not meet the commercial design guidelines. However, moving forward, and the town attorney jogged my memory, what staff would do if someone wanted to apply for a sign like that is, we would deny it, and then they could always appeal that decision, because that is a decision of the community development director. So they could appeal that decision to the planning commission. So that would be the process for that. So it's not really requesting an exception, but then it's the purview of the planning commission to make a decision, and depending on that outcome, obviously, they could appeal ultimately to the town council.
And then the part of my question, which is how to level the playing field? So we encourage all the businesses in town to have appropriate signage. C1, CH exception?
Sure. So C1, CH, adopting a policy with this language tonight would allow the same signage as is allowed in all the other zones for the ground signs specifically. If you're talking about all signs in every zone and all different types of signs, that's a bigger, broader question.
Okay, thank you. We all have that clear now? Okay. Commissioner Talisfor?
Joel, thank you, Chairman Smith. Joel, you said that you would bring back, you could bring back information to us and that we talked about earlier. Is that something that...
That would be where I was speaking to, the direction, where if the commission wanted to provide staff direction to bring back things such as this for medical services or emergency services, that, you know, some exception may be written into the policy as it potentially could get adopted tonight, to have that exception written in there. I'm just not prepared to make that determination right here on the dais.
But I think there is a nuance that you might be missing, is that by adopting the language that's proposed, they can't have a multiple, they'll be able to apply and have a multiple sign. They'll just have to meet the guidelines as to color and material and those things. If you're asking for an exception on top of that, maybe where they'd be able to have separate logos, separate colors, bright colors and those things, that's where staff is saying they'd have to come back for those exceptions. But they would be able to now apply and obtain that multiple sign.
Thank you very much. Now I'm clear.
Okay. Now that we've sorted that out, do we have a motion?
Sure. Be happy to make it.
All right, Commissioner Talisfor?
Unless somebody else wants to. Okay. I would move, let me find everything, that we adopt, are we adopting? Adopting the tenant directory ground sign rewritten policy that was modified in exhibit five, that reads, "A tenant directory sign is any sign which advertises more than one business and includes the business name, addresses, but I would eliminate and/or suite numbers." A tenant directory sign is not a building directory sign which is defined by town code. And I think that will aid our staff in not being so challenged by everybody, everything that they've been challenged by. And then if that still isn't working for them, they can come back again, I guess, and we'll modify it again. Anyway, so that's my motion.
So as I understand it, Commissioner Talisfor, you are moving to accept the interpretation of the sign ordinance as outlined in exhibits three, four, or five?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, yes, in three, four, and five, yes.
All right.
Except with the exclusion of and/or suite numbers.
So, so let me step in, sorry, Chair. So the revised language does include those, and maybe I wasn't, well, not maybe, I definitely was not clear. For a tenant directory ground sign, it would include all of these things. For the multi-tenant ground sign, which is permitted by the central business district, if it did not have all of these things, meaning it did not have addresses and/or suite numbers, it would not be a tenant directory, which is not permitted by the town code currently, but it would be a multi-tenant ground sign that is permitted by the commercial design guidelines. And so therefore, we would be requesting that you approve the language on page two of the staff report for item three this evening.
In its entirety?
Correct.
Okay. Then let me modify my motion to include that, to include and/or suite numbers. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Sayak. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, is there any next step?
There aren't next steps, but technically, this is a policy that was adopted by the planning commission, so someone could appeal that. If they would like to appeal that to the town council, the forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days. As far as next steps, staff will circle back internally to look at any further modifications. And I would just offer that on the long list of work plan items that are potentially possible in the next five years, the sign ordinance revisions is one of those. It is not in this year's work plan, and it is on one of the lower tiers from a work plan workload perspective, but sooner or later, we'll be getting back to the sign ordinance and/or commercial design guidelines, not just for signs, but in total.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. That concludes the agendized items this evening. We move on to new other business. The Director of Community Development, Mr. Paulson, do you have a report?
It's a very brief report. On March 18th, the Development Review Committee approved two applications. One was 14300 Arnrich Road, which was an architecture and site application to approve in addition to an existing single-family house that exceeded 800 square feet. The second was an architecture and site application at 222 Bella Vista Avenue, which was to approve the relocation of an existing pre-1941 house to an adjacent lot and to also do a second story addition. Town council has met twice since we met last, and on March 17th, they appointed various members to boards, committees, and commissions that evening, as well as considering the project at 258 Union Avenue, which was the eight-lot detached, single-family condo project that the planning commission saw and denied. So they considered that, and they remanded that back to the planning commission for further consideration. So pending the outcome of where the applicant decides to go with that application, that may be coming back before this commission. And they also vacated the public right-of-way associated with the Albright Way project that evening. Monday this week, they met and approved the subdivision for the Sisters of the Holy Names that the planning commission recommended approve of. And they also approved the tasting room for Fernwood Cellars on North Santa Cruz Avenue. And lastly, they discussed and modified two traffic fee items that evening. So that will impact applicants moving down, down the line, but I don't know that that has come to a final decision yet, and there may be more work to come. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Previously, I did not ask about subcommittee reports, and in addition to their service on the planning commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees, and are there any reports? Commissioner Sayak?
I actually don't have a report, but do want to make an announcement that tomorrow the Housing Element Advisory Board will be meeting tomorrow, 6:30 to 8:30, in the adult recreation room, I believe the large room is, I think that's on the ground floor. It'll be the first meeting. I know this has garnered significant interest throughout the community, so I want to make sure that the public is aware that tomorrow is the first meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Sayak. And we'll move on to commission matters. Do any members of the commission have an issue to bring to the attention of the commission? Commissioner Sayak?
Just one real quick. Just wanted, I reported this already, but just wanted to remind everyone that I will be absent at the next planning commission meeting.
And we will miss you. This concludes tonight's meeting. The meeting is adjourned.